Welcome to the City Council meeting. The agenda for a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, to be held on Monday, May 4th, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers at 301 South Fifth Street will now come to order. Please rise for invocation by Councilman Ron Black and remain standing for the pleasure of allegiance.
Spireheads, get it. Our Father, I thank you for this city. I thank you for the business people who have struggled and survived and just been in some pretty hard situations, some of them, and we ask your blessings on them. Father, I thank you tonight for our city and county leaders. I thank you for our department heads, employees, and staff, first responders that have worked in less than best situations and really in dangerous situations. We thank you for them. These have been different days for us, Father. Some of us have spent hours on the computer using Zoom and go-to meetings, and our technical skills have improved a little bit because of that. But Father, may you, our physical strength and our economical health soon return. Somehow, it seems like maybe we've been a little kinder to each other, a little bit more patient with each other in these days. For some of us, our families have gotten to know each other again. And I think for most of us, we've decided we really like them. And so, Father, as we return to normal, may it be a new normal that is improved because we have moved through this experience. Place your hand of healing in our community, our state, our nation, and this world. We look to you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Black. Roll call, please, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Here.
Councilwoman DeGerris?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilman Cornman?
Here.
Councilman Black?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you, Clerk Young. Disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Hearing none. Citizens input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. And anyone coming to speak, please do so at this time, and please refrain from touching the microphone or the podium. So, do we have anyone wanting to speak? Seeing none. The consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the City Council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may request to do so.
Make a motion for approval of consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item eight, workshop items for discussion. Item B. The City Council will consider a grant application between the City of Poplar Bluff and the Department of Health and Senior Services to create an active living community of practice for seven communities.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's going to be tough not to touch anything up here. I'll just be slapped if I do.
We also have wipes.
So, this is a grant application through the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services. Actually, the Chamber of Commerce and Steve Halter have been working on this grant, and they've asked, the applicant has to be a city or a local unit or government. So, the Chamber has asked for us to be the applicant. We'd basically be a pass-through opportunity. There would no be, well, there wouldn't be any local matching funds from the city that would be contributing to this project. And it's, the project is, the Chamber of Commerce is working to extend the trail from the intersection of Shelby Road and Canal Boulevard out west, out towards the Wolf Creek Trail. And so, it's 1.8 miles of asphalt trail, and then they're going to designate 1.4 miles of Highway PP as a connector trail for walking, running, and biking. This, this grant that the Chamber's requesting for us to apply for, excuse me, would cover a portion of the engineering fees and the striping and signing along PP Highway. They're asking for $10,000, which is the maximum you can request on this particular grant. $4,900 of that would go towards paying engineering costs, and $5,100 would go towards paying signing and striping. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer what I can. And like I said, I know that Steve Halter and the Health Department, Emily Gooden, have been working on this grant for, earlier in the year, and like I said, had asked us as the local unit of government to be the sponsor of the applicant, application.
Section?
Yes.
A great deal of that will be out in the county. It appears like that'll be running in.
That is correct. Yes, it would just be, you know, that section then along Canal Boulevard from Shelby out that's in the city limits, but the biggest majority of it would be outside of the city limits, yes. And this, like I said, would not go for any actual construction work. This particular grant is just for the, a portion of the engineering that's required, and then some signing and striping, so.
Sounds like an asset for our community. That I make a motion to move to tonight's voting session.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item B. The City Council.
You might be putting that on me.
Thank you. The City Council will review a request from the Poplar Bluff Police Department to destroy antiquated records dated years 2011 to 2014. Mr. Massingham.
Yes, the Missouri Secretary of State prints a manual, basically how counties and municipalities on rules and regulations for destroying records, how long certain records need to be kept, and when they can be destroyed. At this time, the police department has quite a few records following the guidelines of the Secretary of State's manual to go ahead and destroy those records, and we were just asking for permission to do so.
Make a motion to pass it to the May 18 voting session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item C. The City Council will, will consider a petition for annexation for property located at 481 State Highway W, Poplar Bluff, Missouri. The property owners are Joe and Karen Knuckles. Mr. Richardson. Or, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I haven't been moved made that much of a compliment in quite some time.
Mr. Winters, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As he stated, this request is for the annexation of property located at 481 Highway W. It's approximately one and a half acres west on State Highway W. This is a, across Highway W from McLean Park. Planning and zoning is going to begin hearing this request on the zoning of it next Monday. So, this is just simply the request for the annexation, our first step in the process.
Make a motion, we move it to tonight's voting session.
Any further discussion on? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item D. The City Council will consider a petition for annexation of property located at 465 State Highway W, Poplar Bluff, Missouri. The property owner is Kathy Ledwich. Mr. Winters.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As he stated, this property is located at 465 Highway W. It's adjacent to the prior one of the Knuckles. Again, it's on Highway W, just right across from McLean Park.
Our motion is be moved to tonight's voting session.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item E. The City Council will consider a change order number one for the 11th Street Bridge Project. Mr. Massingham.
Yes, this is the bridge on South 11th Street that we were able to do with 8515 money from CDBG, and the contractor ran into a few issues with relocating some of the utility lines and actually mostly spire gas and a telephone line. And in order to close out this grant, we just need to extend the completion date to April 19th, and that's what we were asking for tonight, and then we can close the grant
I make a motion, we move that to tonight's voting session.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item F. The City Council will consider an agreement between the City of Poplar Bluff and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission regarding the federal airport improvement program. Mr. Massingham.
Yes, this is a airport grant for the replacement. It's not an overlay of the runway. It's an actual replacement of the current runway. This is just one step in this process. The project cost is going to be around $5 million, with city's portion being approximately 10%. We have that money put away in our capital fund. Construction will probably not start till next year, but this is the, we need to do this agreement to get this started.
Our motion is be moved to tonight's voting, voting session.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item G. The City Council will discuss a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to amend section 45.050 to include liquor by-the-drink establishments as a conditional use in the CX-3 district and amending the general conditional use permit application. Mr. Winters.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is one that we, we spent quite a bit of time on in planning and zoning. So, the CX-3 district is downtown, you know, bordered by the river, Fifth Street, Vine, and then the Coliseum parking lot, the train tracks. And so, currently, in that district, the only establishments that can sell alcohol are establishments that have at least 50% of their sales in food. We've had some different folks over the last couple of years come to me and to the downtown director, Jerika, when she was there, asking, interested in opening businesses that would sell alcohol but not sell food. A couple instances where it's a gentleman interested in locating a piano bar downtown. There's another, some folks that are still, still in consideration, looking at opening a place where you go and you paint, and they serve you margaritas and wine. So, what we were asking, it's been before planning and zoning, and what the recommendation is, is to allow by conditional use establishments that would sell alcohol by the drink without having to sell food. Planning and zoning asked me to go back and try to define that better, and I spent a lot of time trying to find a better way to define that. And really, you know, I couldn't find anything that I liked, that I felt comfortable presenting to planning and zoning. And so, kind of what my recommendation to planning and zoning was, was to change the application for a conditional use permit. Right now, for a conditional use permit, it's a pretty basic, simple, straightforward application, who it is and where it's at and what you're going to do, and that's basically it. And so, what I did is add eight questions to the conditional use permit application. I think you all should have a copy of that application, but just to kind of read through the eight questions that someone that was applying, so someone wanted to open a piano bar in downtown, instead of just telling us that's what they wanted to do and asking for the conditional use, we now want more detail. And this would not just be for this specific instance, but it would be for any conditional use going forward. So, the first question is, describe how the location of the site would not adversely affect the general welfare of the surrounding property owners. And the second one, explain how the location would not result in undesirable concentration of premises, of premises for similar establishments, so how there's not going to be an overabundance of the same kind of thing there, either in downtown or anywhere else in town. Number three, explain how the proposed location of this site does not aggravate existing problems created by your use, such as littering, loitering, public drinking, this noise, and et cetera. Number four, explain how your project results in a net employment gain. Number five, explain how the project will result in an increase in sales tax collected. Number six, is this project a unique business addition to our community, and if so, explain. Number seven, explain how the project will contribute to the long-term overall economic improvement of the area. And number eight, explain how the project will result in a positive upgrade to the area. So, you know what? As I said, you know, some of these businesses that have come to us that are interested in locating downtown, we don't, I think, you know, there is no disagreement that we don't want undesirable, you know, dive bars, what you, however you want to use that term in downtown, but places are going to attract more economic activity, though. So, by going through and answering these eight questions and changing this conditional use permit, we, first of all, you know, you're going to have to have a solid business plan to be able to answer these eight questions and not just kind of winging it coming into this. So, we're asking for more information to get a more specific idea. This, you know, by it being a conditional use, it also is going to be a, going through planning and zoning and them going through this process, and then that recommendation for planning and zoning, coming at City Councils. Before anything is approved, it would go through both of those processes still, so.
So, you think it's a good idea? Think it's a good deal?
I do think it is a good idea. I think that, you know, we, there, we have lots of empty storefronts downtown that, you know, if you go to Cape, you go to Farmington, you know, that's, that's kind of the vision that downtown Poplar Bluff or the organization has for downtown, and I think to attract those types of businesses that are, that are not going to detract from our downtown but are going to improve the economic conditions of our downtown and invest in our downtown, bring new businesses and new visitors to our downtown, yeah, I think it's, I think by putting these things in place, we could take a step in the right direction of making sure that we have the kind of businesses that we want in downtown that are going to attract people spending money downtown.
I tend to agree with you. Any comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I think my comments would be, I think Mr. Winters done an excellent job here of trying to accomplish what could be acceptable in an area, and I think whether it works or not is how studious the ones that are responsible for implementing that, because it could go another direction pretty easily.
You are correct.
And that part does concern me.
And that's kind of, you know, that's definitely in my concern. I mean, I, you know, Mark may get tired of me, and I may be sent to the house tomorrow. There's no telling. So, you know, it is to look into the future and to plan for those kind of things and to require somebody that wants to open a business downtown on a, or really any conditional use in the future, to be able to answer those eight questions that have been added. Somebody's going to have to have a thought-out, a well-thought-out plan to be able to answer those. I actually had somebody today tell me, those are hard questions, and I said, exactly, that they were intended to be hard questions, so.
I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to move this to the 18th voting session. Second.
Any further comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Winters.
Thank you.
Item H. The City Council will discuss a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to amend section 440.010, definitions and section 440.020 to include verbiage and regulations for small wireless communication facilities in all zoning districts. Mr. Winters.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That was a hard one.
So, this is another one that planning and zoning got to spend a lot of time working on. So, small cell wireless is the next hot thing in cellphone communications. So, as opposed to your large antennas, one of them, they're getting ready to build on the, on Eighth Street soon for AT&amp;T that we've heard about recently. These are, as they say, as the title states, they're small cells. These are small antennas that are mounted on top of light poles, are mounted on top of utility poles, they can be mounted on top of buildings, for the new 5G technology. And what we have, you know, what some of the concerns are about these antennas is, a lot of times, you know, the antennas are on top of the telephone pole, but they have to have equipment in a box that's mounted lower on the pole, and there's been times where those, you know, cities that don't have these kind of ordinances in place, you know, they're putting them in the way of sidewalks, they're putting them in traffic sightlines. And so, so what we've done is, using Missouri Municipal League, they had a sample ordinance, we went through that, and some other cities in Missouri that already have an ordinance regarding this in place, we used some of those, and kind of a combination of a few different examples to put this together, to, to help prevent these antennas, when they do come to town, from having a negative impact on our community and being eyesores and that kind of thing. So, anybody that would, you know, if AT&amp;T wanted to come in here and start installing 5G small cell antennas, there would be an application process they go through where the planning department and municipal utilities would be reviewing those applications to make sure they're compliant with, with our ordinances and also with existing policies and procedures that municipal utilities has in place for anything being mounted on their poles. And there's an application fee for the process, and then municipal utilities, they have an annual pole attachment fee that these people will be responsible for. If you have any questions, I know it's not a, not a short document, 20, I think it ended up about 24 pages, I think, was the, was the total on it by the time we got done. And we, I think we workshopped it three times, I think, before we finally voted on it, and planning and zoning with some different back and forth and recommendations and looking at some other information, and so.
I just thanks for your advance diligence on that, because this 5G's coming, and so I appreciate that, and.
Thank you.
It's best for the city.
Motion to move this to the voting session on the 18th.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item I. The City Council will discuss a recommendation from the Fire Department to donate used SCBA self-contained breathing apparatus, apparatus, air packs, and accessories to the Three Rivers College Fire Science Program. Mr. Massingham.
Yes, sir. We purchased new SCBA, which stands for Self-Continue Breathing Apparatus, air packs for the Fire Department. We would like to donate these to the college for their fire science program. Some of you will remember, we donated two of our old fire trucks several years ago to the college. College does a great job with their fire science program, and these will be very helpful for them. So, we're just asking for permission to transfer those over to the college.
Glad we can be a partner with the Three Rivers and college, and make a motion, we move it to the May 18 voting session.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item J. The City Council will consider a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission rezoning property from RS2 General Residential to O1 Office Professional for future commercial use. The property lies between Katy Lane and Baron Road. The property owners are John D. Barber and the Barber family, and this item will be, will need to be brought back off the table.
Our motion is to be moved off the table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Winters.
Want to say thank you for having a council meeting just for me tonight. As he stated, the applicants are John D. Barber, Robert Kevin Barber, Jane Walters, and Roseanne Huck. They're requesting to rezone property from RS2 General Residential to O1 Office Professional. The property lies between Katy Lane and Baron Road, and what the applicants have, are proposing is to divide that property into two parcels. The parcel facing Katy Lane is the parcel requested to be rezoned as O1, and then the parcel that's, would be .71 acres that fronts Baron Road would remain as RS2 General Residential. The, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended this rezoning request with two recommendations, that the 1.61 acres adjoining Katy Lane be rezoned to O1, and that the northly remain as RS2. The second one was the O1, the legal description of the southerly O1 parcel shall be deed restricted to include a permanent vegetative screen along the property line between the O1 and the RS2 zones. Met with, with Councilman Davis, and I've emailed with Councilwoman Horton, and met with the neighboring property owners this afternoon, and we kind of looked at the, you know, at the property, and what, what I'm recommending with, with some guidance from, from Councilman Davis is to maybe clarify that second, that second recommendation of the net, of the vegetative buffer, vegetative screen. And, and looking, we've looked at a few different cities and what their vegetative screens have, have kind of been a little bit more specific than ours is. So, I've given to you earlier, just a short, a couple of sentences to clarify that, and I'll read it to you real quick. Buffer area, the vegetative buffer area, shall consist of fast-growing ornamental evergreen trees planted so as to provide a solid screening from the adjacent residential area upon their maturity. Trees shall be a minimum of six feet tall when planted, reaching a minimum of 20 feet tall when fully matured. All landscaping shall be properly maintained as determined by the city manager or their day. or their designee and kept alive and free of disease and damage. So, you know, just to, to clarify, you know, just because if you approve the zoning, the rezoning request, you know, this would, would impact whoever is gonna develop that Office Professional. So, when the applicants sell or they decide themselves to develop that Office Professional parcel, then this would be part of their building application process. Right now, when someone has a building permit application, they would bring in a site plan and we would be required to review their, their landscaping. This is just gonna be an added layer to this parcel of property to their landscaping plan when it's, before it can be developed and before a building permit can be issued. Any questions? I know this one has been, I was actually on Planning and Zoning the first time this request came through as a citizen. And we've been working with, with Mr. Barber for a few months on, on this one to kinda get it to where it's at today. So, I think some of the neighbors are here, they may have some, some comments they'd like to add. So, if you have any, if you don't have any questions to me, I'll step aside and, and let them speak. And Mr. Barber is here too, he may have some comments to add also.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to have a comment on this item? Please step forward and state your name and address, please.
Thank you, City Manager Mark and Mayor Smith and all the rest of public servants. When you read the paper, all the boards, the things that do, this one does the most. So, thank you for, all for serving on it.
Give us your name.
Oh, hello.
And address, please.
Laura Clark, two-five-zero-five Baron Road. Not touching, okay. This is not my first rodeo. I've, I think been here over the twenty years several times. I, if I were better organized, I was looking for a packet of thing. I always kept all the newspaper things, but I'm not well organized. So, just take my word, this is not my first rodeo. We've been, more or less have fought the, what we call encroachment on our neighborhood 'cause it is a, a nice little strip there of houses. And now we have American Superstores and Credit Union and a church. Of course, we've had the florist, it was grandfathered in. And we have the house that faces Baron Road that's kinda used as an office and parking lot during the day. So, I think we've probably had as much encroachment as I would like. But I do know the Barber family and I wish they were like slum landlords or something so I could not like them, but they're not. They've been longtime friends, longtime friends and respected people. And so, I, I, I thought this particular time when they were bringing about the barrier, it might be something of a compromise. Now, it's probably what, what I, I love about the property across the street. Dan and his family have always mowed it and kept it looking so pretty. In the spring, there are daisies and, you know, the, there's a thicket, a copse of trees right across from Ms. James' house next to mine where the deer come from behind her woods and have their babies. And then they cross back later 'cause it's such a big round thicket. And we've loved that. And the only down thing is in the wintertime, the deciduous trees, you can see them you can get a pretty good view of the Superstores and the Credit Union. And the sound is, comes over better. So, those trees that align Katy Lane, they are so beautiful. I sure would hate to see them go, but that, that would be, I guess, part of the compromise thing. 'Cause they, they, they muffle sound, they're pretty, they give oxygen, they make anchors for erosion. They're just wonderful little creations. The, our elevation looks, the Katy Lane area, the Katy Lane area is kinda flat. Then it kinda grows up and ascends to the Baron Road Park. So, I was thinking, and where's Matt? Oh, there you are. Don't shoot me. I, I was thinking, well, I used to be five foot eight and a half, I think. I'm, I'm like two inches shorter now. So, most of those trees over there are deciduous. And so, imagine me this tall with little branches like that. That's the, not gonna do the whole, I mean, maybe they could be two feet tall or something because we would look down on that. It's not the same as the flat looking at it as far as blocking things. So, that's the only thing I can kinda think of in that. And so, I, I, I do like having it specific instead of just saying, provide adequate. I mean, one person's adequate is not another one. So, being specific like that is, has eased my, you know, feels about it. So, I, it's reserved. I guess that's about my statements. I, I just love the, I love Papa Bluff with all of its warts, all of its good points. I've just loved living here. And my neighbor Barbara has lived forty-eight years in her house. She moved in at nineteen seventy-two. And we moved in in sixty-nine. So, together, we've almost got a century of living there and enjoying living in that area. So, thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Please. And just tell us your, your name and address, please.
I'm Barbara James, twenty-four thirty-one Baron Road. And I didn't plan to speak tonight. I told Laura I would come and be with her, but I decided that I, I would speak. And we would, I would be satisfied with the ornamental evergreen trees that would be planted to block out the commercial property that eventually may be built on Katy Lane. And also, it would help the residential property facing Baron Road 'cause nobody wants to look out their back door and see a commercial property and see American Superstore and maybe the Federal Credit Union. Although Federal Credit Union building is a very attractive building. And like Laura said, we, I've lived there seventy-two years. And I am a neighbor of Mark Massingham. And I think he enjoys walking his dogs in my field back there, which I try to keep, keep up. In fact, yesterday and today, all I've done was go back there and pick up limbs and sticks. And it looks like I'm gonna have to do it again tomorrow. So, thank you.
Thank you.
She has that property back there, it looks like a park. And she takes care of it by herself, so.
Thank you, congratulations. Is there anyone else?
Oh, I, I was telling that Barbara lived next door, how long she'd live there. We do have someone in the neighborhood, I hope that, well, they just lived there a year or two. And we're just seeing if they, if they're good citizens or not, on the right side of us. But I forgot to mention that. I think I forgot other points too, but.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark. Is there anyone else would like to have a comment on this? Please come and state your name and address.
Well, I told, told our city planner that I appreciate his help to this point. And Laura tried very hard to teach me Spanish in high school. I don't think I cooperated quite enough.
Give us your name and address, sir.
Still remember a few words. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm Dan Barber. I live at one-thirty-seven Ridge Hill Lane. And that's just outside the city limits, blah, blah, blah. Well, I appreciate the work everyone's done. I appreciate the neighbors being cooperative. Now, my grandfather bought that property in nineteen forty-eight. And it, when he bought it, it was in the country. So, what's happened, I think the city's kinda grown up around our country property. And so, I'm glad people appreciate it. And I think the compromise is, is reasonable. And I think our family, we have a horti, Roseanne has a, my sister Roseanne Huck has a daughter who's a horticulturist in St. Louis area. So, she knows all about trees and flowers and plants and things like that. I talked with John Standard about the, he thought cedars would go good in there for a vegetative barrier. He says that sometimes people aren't always compliant when they agree to put in a vegetative barrier. So, we would be willing to do that. We loved our grandparents who bought the property and spent happy days out there as, as children. So, we want it to be a, continue to be that sort of location we can drive by and be proud of.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion from the audience? I'll hear a motion from the council.
So moved. Be moved to the voting session on May eighteenth.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Item nine, action required items. Item AA, bill number eight-two-three-one. The City Council will take action on an ordinance approving change order number one for the Eleventh Street Bridge Project.
Motion for first reading, bill number eight-two-three-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one relating to the Papa Bluff South Eleventh Street Bridge Project.
Motion for second reading, bill eight-two-three-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one relating to the Papa Bluff South Eleventh Street Bridge Project.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill number eight-two-three-one is adopted. Item BB, bill number eight-two-three-two. The City Council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission.
Motion for first reading. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Papa Bluff and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to a federal airport improvement program grant.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Papa Bluff and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to a federal airport improvement program grant.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill number eight-two-three-two is adopted. Item CC, resolution number one-nine-two-two. The City Council will take action on, on a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit a grant application to the Department of Health and Senior Services.
Motion for the reading of the resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Counselor.
A resolution of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute grant applications to the Missouri Department of Health and Human Services relating to the creation of an active living community of practice program for the City of Papa Bluff.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Black? Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Resolution one-nine-two-two is adopted. Item DD, resolution number one-nine-two-three. The City Council will take action on a resolution with respect to the annexation of certain unincorporated area of the City of Papa Bluff. Such property being located at four-eighty-one Highway W, Papa Bluff, Missouri, owned by Joel and Karen Knuckles.
Motion for reading, resolution one-nine-two-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Counselor.
A resolution with respect to the annexation of a certain unincorporated area to the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri. Such property being located at four-eighty-one Highway W in Butler County, Missouri, and owned by Joel and Karen Knuckles.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Resolution number one-nine-two-three is adopted. Item EE, resolution number one-nine-two-four. The City Council will take action on a resolution with, with respect to the annexation of certain unincorporated area of Papa, Papa Bluff. Such property being located at four-sixty-five Highway W, Papa Bluff, Missouri, owned by Kathy Ledwich.
Motion for first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Counselor.
A resolution with respect to the annexation of a certain unincorporated area to the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri. Such property being located at four-sixty-five Highway W in Butler County, Missouri, and owned by Kathy Ledwich.
Motion for adoption. Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Resolution number one-nine-two-four is adopted. Item FF. The City Council of the City of Papa Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the Open Meetings Law in sections. Okay, I've just been informed that, that we do not need to have a closed meeting. We will hear, a motion to adjourn following the city manager's report.
So moved. Second.
Sorry about that, Mayor. I meant to mention that earlier. Just a few updates. First, on the Highway sixty-seven project. If you'll remember, we applied for grants through the state and were awarded both of those grants, which is a four-mile section starting at the Highway sixty. the Highway 60, the, what I call the Donovan interchange. We're in the process of doing the environmental impact study, which will actually go 10 miles, just within two miles of the Arkansas border. That should be completed in a couple of months, and those funds will come out of the Highway 67 tax that was passed back in August. An update on the sales tax. Before we got our sales tax in in April, so January through March, our sales tax was down 4% for the year compared to last year, and we actually budgeted a 3% increase. The sales tax we got in April, which is actually for February sales, was up, which currently, that means we're at a, down 2% instead of 4%. The sales tax we received this week in May will reflect March sales, and June will reflect April sales, which will be the probably two worst months that we've experienced in years and years due to the coronavirus. I'm not sure how that's going to affect us. I will say that of the top 10 retailers in the city, none of those businesses closed. Four of those were grocery stores, one of those was the Walmart Supercenter, which also includes a grocery store, and three of those were home improvement stores, which seemed like when the stimulus checks came out, those places were packed. So I'll just say I'm cautiously optimistic. It may not be as bad as we thought, but we'll know more later this week and then again next month. Pool and Fitness Center opened up this morning, and they're trying to do the six-foot distancing. The lobby at City Hall, we've decided to keep closed for right now. The quarters down there, the hallways are very narrow, and it's almost impossible to do the six-foot distancing, but we'll wait a few weeks and see how things go. And the only other thing I want to report is the, Mr. Winters, our city planner, and the fire chief are working on a grant through rural development for a new ladder truck for the Fire Department. Those trucks cost anywhere from $800,000 to $900,000. This grant would cover 35% of that cost, but they also offer low-interest loans, so at some point, we'll be coming to the council and hopefully get the grant approved for a new ladder truck, which is desperately needed. You know, the one keeps breaking down and has for quite a while, and it's hard to get parts for it, so we really do need that. Other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Any further comment from the council? I will hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?